Lucky, I guess you can sign it technically speaking.
Yep, everyone that's here has to.
Um.
So, about, about, about eight days from now.
Did you sign?
Not yet.
Get it yesterday.
I will take it.
And by eight days from now.
Let me record this.
Some thirty-six, thirty-eight, yeah, because there's like eleven plannings, you know, so.
Not starting yet.
So it should be good, right?
There's a warning.
In September, like last year.
Here it goes, here it goes.
The stream's current something.
All right, let me see if we got the sound.
Where can I click over here? Oh, here, now I lost it. Lower than the recommended.
Here, Rob. And it's open.
Did you sign this?
Okay, looks good.
I think they're just reading the rates.
I don't know, Brian, do you want to look at this?
Yeah.
Brian?
All right, are you ready?
It's going, but it's saying that the recommended bit.
It's our internet connection.
I don't, I don't know what that means.
A throughput.
I mean, I.
Okay, everybody in the room signed it? Okay.
I don't see the pause on here.
Is anybody who walked in? Just gonna pause that then.
I don't see the pause on here. Well, we can worry about that when we get.
Don't let Jennifer hear it.
See where it says, uh. Stop, uh, just stop screen, screen, yeah, stop streaming, just hit that, don't hit end broadcast.
Okay.
I have, uh, Vicki is taping it too, so we're covered there. I just have to tell her if we go in executive session unless we use my office or the, the other room. Okay, is everybody ready?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome everybody to the Community Development Block Grant Meeting of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, at 7:04 PM. Okay. Item two is to read the public notice. This is the pu- public notice, Village of Walton Hills, 2025 Cogga County Competitive Municipal Grant Program and 2025 Cogga County Competitive Supplemental Grant Program. The Village of Walton Hills is eligible to apply for up to $150,000 in federal community development grant funds administered by Cogga County through the Department of Development. Funds can be used for variety, variety of housing, economic development, and community improvement projects. The Village of Walton Hills is eligible, eligible to apply for up to $50,000 in supplemental community administered by Cogga County through the Development of Development, Department of Development. Funds can be used for variety of housing, economic development, and community improvement projects. Residents are invited meeting, hearing, to he- to voice their opinions on local housing and community development needs or to submit opinions in writing to the address below. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Village Hall, Village Hall Council Chambers, 7595 Walton Road, Walton Hills, Ohio, 44146. Okay. That's what we had posted, correct, Joe?
That is correct, for the record, it's 2024.
2024. What did I s-?
Oh, the document says 2024.
Yes. Okay. So, I read 2025, into the record, it's 2024, for both the Cogga County Communit- Competitive Municipal Grant Program and the Cogga County Competitive Supplemental Grant Program. Okay, item three is the project, the script is proposing to apply for a grant of 150,000, maximum amount, to perform concrete pavement repairs in the Crick Road and Hanan Park Way industrial parks. By CDBG rule, the industrial area is the only improvement target area in the village and thus the only area in which the village can spend the money. In addition, the village is eligible to apply for up to $50,000 in supplemental community development grant funds. Okay. Does council have any questions related to that? Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Any residents? I'd like to welcome any residents or non-residents that are watching us on YouTube. Does anybody have any questions? From there, you can type your questions in. We'll wait a few minutes.
Yeah, prograth?
Yes, councilman Whedon.
While, while we're waiting, could Mr. Gelati just explain why only the industrial area? Could explain that to our, our viewers and just to the general public? Why that, only that area qualifies by rule?
Yeah, no problem. Honestly, by the rules of the program, you have to be in one of two zones that Cogga County identifies, your options are a moderate to low income level or what they call improvement target area, ITA. Thankfully, we don't have any low to moderate income areas in the village, so we don't qualify. We have one improvement target area which exactly mirrors our industrial zone over there, so that's the only way we qualify to even apply. And then whatever project we do, pavement repairs have all within that improvement target area. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gelati. You know, I didn't do roll call, but we probably should do roll call just so we. I don't think you have to. No? Not for the public here. Okay. Okay, any other questions? Anything?
I have a comment, Larry on Sunset says you have no audio.
Hmm, I had audio. Let me go. I can hear you. All right, let me, let me check it real quick.
Hello, hello?
Yeah, somebody's got to talk, we won't have an either.
Uh, let's see.
It's kind of very slow.
On your phone, you're getting it?
Okay.
Well, that, you've really got to talk into the mic.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's there.
It's low?
It's low, we got to talk into the mic.
We're gonna have to try to figure out a way to. To increase it. To increase that, uh, audio mix, see, it's coming up here, it's.
Yeah, it's there. We'll just all of us make sure. I know we've had that before, some residents have said that. One of our reds, Larry, if you're listening, we'll make sure we talk into the mics, we made an adjustment there and hopefully that will help now. Any other questions? Okay. I don't see any public comment at this time. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion second.
Second by Diane Canzoni, vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman.
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned at 7:10 PM. Thank you, everybody. So Jennifer made the motion and then Diane second. Okay. We're gonna go, everybody's good, we're going right into our next meeting. Okay. Like to welcome everybody to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Village of Walton Hills of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, at 7:00 PM. First order of business is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call?
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Here.
Councilman Whedon?
Present.
All of council present, along with our Nicole Sell, our law solicitor, John Montello. We also have our street commissioner, Rob Kalman, street commissioner, uh, zoning inspector, Rob Kalman, our village engineer, Joe Gelati, Melissa Sangrick, our fiscal clerk is here also. Okay. And the item three, any comments related to the agenda items? Okay, well, we'll just go down, if anybody has any questions, we can always come back to it. So we have legislation which is Ornancy 4-8, authorizing collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 67, Walton Hills Division. The Safety and Insurance Committee worked through the summer along with, uh, the police department's representatives working on this CBA agreement. Uh, we, they did agree to it, we have it in front of us. We are going to talk about it in executive session. With our representative, Mr. Delano, when he gets here, when we go in executive session. Uh, I would, Jen- of the Safety Insurance Committee, if you wanted, did you want to add anything about that? Jennifer?
No, well, we've been working diligently and meeting for hours at a time to try to get this hammered out to everyone's satisfaction. I think we came up with a pretty good agreement and I'd like to introduce it for adoption in the special council meeting.
Okay. So I, I think we'll, just to let the residents know, we are going to discuss in an executive session and following the executive session and the special council meeting, we do have legislation tonight. So when we do come back, we are going to vote on, uh, things, so we will be voting on, on this tonight. Okay. Everybody good with that? Okay, we'll move on to, we, uh, just to kind of maybe just, the, it is a three-year contract we will be entering into. Uh, so it's for this year, uh, '24, '25, and '26. We have item B, Ornancy 2024-9, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the Village of Walton Hills. Going to ask Nicole Sell, law officer, to, uh, talk to that. Nikki?
Um, so there have been several amendments we will need to be making. I would like to see this, um, first reading for this evening. There are some additional changes that will be made to wages and things, um, of that nature, nature, but there are some, um, general fund increases that we'll have to make before year end. So the total is actually on the legislation will probably be reduced depending on the outcome of, um, negotiations with the CBA, et cetera. But the items that are definitely on there would be, um, we're gonna have to increase for a retirement payout this year. We're gonna, and I can say like this week. Dispatch medical, uh, will be increasing, fire and EMS, I think we, in the budget, we accounted for a 2% raise. There was actually a increase in the dispatch contract. And then there were some smaller items, um, for the cleaning, uh, transportation.
Excuse me, not that, you mean a fire contract? Dispatch.
Oh, sorry, fire and EMS.
Yeah, fire and EMS, because we don't have a dispatch contract, you know, we don't dispatch for anybody but ourselves.
Right, and the other bigger items were, um, that get, we'll have to pay this year and it's for two years prior that hadn't, hadn't gotten paid. So the estimated amount will increase another $145,000. In addition, the bank, cleaning, uh, an adjustment for our payroll. Katie, who does our payroll, increase in other professional services. So those are some of the bigger ones and I'll send out a final list this week. In addition to that, we're increasing our capital, um, $179,960 due to some changes in projects that we'll be doing. Some of those projects will be reimbursed this year. So those will come in the form of, of an advancement from the general fund to the capital fund. And again, I can send you guys all this information out. I increased the police pension. Again, that may change due to the outcome of the CBA. And those were the, the largest items. So when we have a final projection on all of that, I'll send it out this week.
And Nikki, you mentioned that you, when we were talking, that you're, um, looking at like $500,000, we're gonna get back for some projects, close to that? Wasn't it?
I have that here, hang on.
And you can give that to everybody, I just kind of.
Right.
Just kind of have an idea.
Well, um, I talked to Joe and we felt about $170,000 was gonna come back this year, a little over that in the, uh, from Hannah Crick, Andres, the county ass- asphalt in the storm video when we had talked the other day. But there are, uh, we also may get money from the county asphalt program. We didn't know if that would be guaranteed this year, but we included the items we thought for sure we'd be getting back.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Did, did that come in right on budget or did that go under? I know they got it done so fast, I didn't know if it was gonna be a little less or, or more.
Yeah, Joe, if you could talk to that, that's great.
Yeah, Diane, to answer the question, try to give you the hit, the quick timeline. Back in March, when the budget was originally approved for 2024, it was approved, uh, with a total project cost $675,000, $250,000 to be paid by OPWC, thus leaving $425 as the village net expenditure. Fast forward to currently, now that the project is, is really pretty much done, it costs $486,000. So OPWC will pay $173,000, thus it's only 312 grand is what the village is gonna be out of pocket. So 113 grand below what we originally budgeted. So the answer to your question is yes.
Thank you.
Good, good news.
Yes.
Go ahead, Brian, I know you had some questions.
Nicole, so, uh, in March, we passed a budget with a $1.2 million deficit. So I want to know, uh, and I know we'll put this on for first reading, but what this is going to do with, with that $1.2 million deficit, obviously it's going to increase it. But you say that you're going to get some money back, uh, which I know from, from the various county sources and things like that. And some of these, like this general fund advance to capital, that's a transfer, right? That's.
That would be an advance.
It's an advance.
Yeah, not a transfer. So basically, we're expecting that money to be received back this year.
Yeah, so that's what I would like to see at, at, what we're, um, asked to pass and what that final, uh, adjustment is going to do to the expenses over revenues for the year.
Okay.
And I know, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, you did sent, send us a June and a July end of month, uh, statement, which were really nice. I really appreciate all, all of the finance offices' hard work on that. Some of the best reports we've ever received, if not the best, probably the best, but, um, anyways, I, I did have a couple of questions on that specific report and I can get with you later on. It's not really germane to the meeting right now.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
And, you know, because we want everyone to be comfortable, we can, we, we'll have this on the agenda for next week. We could talk, but I know, Mr. Spitznagle, you might, I don't think you, you mentioned you might not be at the next meeting.
I can't be here.
Right. But we can also put it on for the council meeting too. You know, if not, we can always go second reading next week and then have it ready for council too, if there's questions and if we do want to go over, uh, the, uh, the budget too, kind of. But we wanted to put it on there because Nikki, we're trying to, you know, uh, wasn't like it needed to be passed, but we wanted to get started on it. So that you guys get, everybody gets a better feel for it. Did everybody receive, uh, the July? July was the last one, right? Nikki, you're still working on August, okay. Any other questions on the additional appropriations?
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
On Nicole's budget, you did say, uh, our, uh, income tax and some other things were, uh, were better than originally projected, I believe 10% more. Uh, is there anything else, uh, coming in that, since that report, that looks like it's, uh, gonna have a positive in, impact on the revenues?
Um, I think, well, when we get some of these reimbursements, that's gonna be a big impact. As far as, uh, reader revenue, that's up and down. I think this is gonna be our first year that we're really gonna see kind of where we are and it just depends on when people pay. So some months are gonna be higher and some months are gonna be lower. So I think at, at the end of this year, we'll have a good idea of that. As far as any other income coming in, the biggest thing we have is our interest rate so far with STAR, which this month we earned $11,000. So we're hoping that keeps up, that could be $50,000 or $60,000 before the end of the year, so that's good. And quite honestly, I don't, I can't think of anything else that would be big besides just our road project income. He takes, he's gotten quite a bit for us, Joe.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question for Nikki. We'd received one payment on the TIF from, uh, the first building. Do we have a second payment coming this year yet for that?
We do have a second payment of, um, and I don't have it in front of me, but I want to, I'm not gonna even project right at the moment. But that, I don't think that's the final value that we'll be getting ever. I think it may have been around 20,000, but I don't want, I don't want you to take that for, you'll see it on our next statement, it's coming probably next week.
I was just wondering if we, if we'd gotten it, that's all.
Yeah, we did, mm-hmm.
So that's something we can show to Nikki, right? To help.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Any other? Okay, is everybody okay to move on with, with that item? Okay. Any questions from anybody, audience, residents, listening? Okay, we're on item C now. Resolution 2024-25, authorizing the mayor to apply to the Ohio Public Works Commission for a potential grant and/or loan for the funding of capital infrastructure improvement projects in the Village of Walton Hills. Joe, you want to talk to that a little bit here?
Yeah, I can do that, Mayor. While we're on the topic of grant applications, if I could go back for a moment to our CDBG discussion from a little bit earlier. We just had the public hearing, which is required for the application. But we do have to have authorizing legislation to be a part of our application as well. We do need to do that next Tuesday night, uh, September 10th, because the application is due on September 16th. So, uh, we would ask that we call a quick special council meeting on the evening of the 10th to pass the authorizing legislation so we can include it with our application on the 16th.
Okay. Thank you, Joe, for that.
Yep.
Now we're back to item C.
Yes, item C, so this is our annual OPWC grant application. This year, we will be applying for money to OPWC to pave Ryan Drive and Kaylee Circle. Uh, I think everybody's probably familiar with it, if you're not, it's the, uh, small Wolf, Single Access subdivision on Dunham Road up near the Maple Heights border. Pavement's in bad shape, it has been for a number of years now. Uh, we applied last year, uh, we missed out on the funding by only two points. So given the fact that we were so close last year, uh, I think it's a good move, uh, for us as a village to apply again this year. Keeping in mind that the, uh, the bar, if you will, the cutoff for funding changes every year because we can control what we apply for, but we have no control over what all of the other communities apply for. So some years you need 55 points, some years you need 62 points, wherever it falls, uh, to get funded, so. Application is due September 12th.
I know I, uh, you guys, we have a lot on the agenda, I sent Joe's memos, uh, and memos from Rob recommending this legislation. And I can read that into the record in the council meeting. Also, I have to find, here I got them, well, here we are.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Joe, is this more beneficial for you if we were to pass this as a sus- suspension tonight? Or would it not make a difference?
Uh, yes, I would ask that we suspend the rules and pass it this evening so I can include it with the application on, uh, the 12th. Yeah, thank you.
And how much of the project would this fund?
Uh, we would ask for $250,000 and the project is roughly about $490,000, so right around 50%.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that? All right, we'll move on. So we'd like to ask for suspension of that. Hopefully we'll get that grant. I think we, we done a great job, just missed it last time, so, um, hopefully we'll get it. All right. Where are we at? Suspension. Okay, we are on item D. Resolution 2024-26, authorizing the mayor and the fiscal officer of the Village of Walton Hills to enter into a contract with Trymore Construction for the Andres Drive Drainage Improvement Project. Do you want to talk about that, Joe?
Yeah, I can do that briefly as well. Uh, this is to clean up a roadside drainage problem that we've had on Andres Drive for a couple of years now. Rob and I have been battling it, uh, so this is to award the contract to Trymore Construction. Uh, again, I would ask if we could suspend the rules, pass it on suspension this evening uh, so that we can award the contract, have Trymore move forward, uh, and perform the work this fall. Oh, and, uh, fully funded through any RSD, community cost share money.
So no cost to the village then, Joe?
Zero. Correct.
Okay. So this is another one we'd like to ask for suspension on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
It would be done this year?
And you do have the, in your packet, gave you that, you should have, I'll have that. Okay. We have item E, Resolution 2024-27, authorizing the mayor and the fiscal officer, officer of the village. authorizing the mayor and the fiscal officer of the village of Walton Hills to enter into a contract with specialized construction for the 2024 Asphalt Maintenance Program. Joe, since you're there, I'll have you touch base on that.
I'm still here at the podium, Mayor Don. So, yeah, this is to award our annual county route asphalt maintenance program. Low bid we're recommending, again, this year is specialized construction. They've done this a couple of times in the past over the years for us. Crack seal, spot patching, and pavement markings on various county routes around the village. In the packet, I'm sure you see that the bid is $109,000. We've done some quick math. We expect to receive, conservatively, we expect to receive $60,000 in reimbursement from the county. So it'd be a max $49,000 out of, out of the village's pocket, so to speak.
I have a question, Mayor. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yes, and also, one last time, we would ask for suspension so that we can award the contract, instruct the contractor to move forward. They've indicated that they may be able to start as early as next week, so.
Very good. Go ahead, Brian.
You mentioned the county reimbursement.
Yes.
We received a letter, and correct me on this, at the beginning of the year, where the county awarded us $88,000 reimbursement?
That's correct. Yes.
So how did that $88,000, is that an apportionment of the total cost?
Yes, so here, sort of. So here's how the program works. The county will reimburse us with the cost of materials. We're responsible for the cost of labor. It's usually around 50-50 split, but you never know exactly until the bids come in because when contractors bid, they provide us a cost of labor and a cost of materials. Again, I'll back up to March when, or earlier this year, when we had our previous infrastructure committee and budget talks. We, and I guess maybe a little conservatively, we budgeted $150,000 to do all the work we wanted to do, and we estimated that we would receive $75,000 in reimbursement. Well, here we are. We've had the bid, and the bids are considerably lower than the 150 we estimated, only 109. So it stands to reason that the reimbursement would go down at a similar rate.
Thank you.
If council's comfortable with that, we'd like to ask for suspension for that, too. Okay. Any questions on that, item E? Okay. Anything from any residents listening? Okay. Then we have resolution 2024-28, ODOT preliminary legislation. Joe, you want to talk about that?
Yes, I can. So I'll preface this by saying it's purely a paperwork or housekeeping item on our end as a village and as your end, on your end as a council. Next year, 2025, ODOT will be resurfacing State Route 8, redoing the asphalt, similar to what we typically do on our roads. Since it is a state route in an incorporated village, the village owes zero. There's no participation on our end. But state law does indicate that ODOT has to come to us for this preliminary legislation, and they likely will come to us early next year for what they call the participatory legislation. Basically, we let them work in our village. It's a little bit of a misnomer. We're not really participating because we're not paying anything, so.
And Joe, that will be from border to border?
Border to border, from Sagamore Road to Northfield Bridge, Northfield Road Bridge over the railroad tracks. That's it. We're really hands-off. ODOT handles and manages the whole thing. They'll show up one day and start paving. We'll let you know ahead of time when we find out.
Please do.
We will.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
Joe, I had a question from a resident recently in regards to Route 8.
Okay.
Is our section of Route 8 narrower than Northfield's and Bedford's?
It is.
So is, are we going to be equal then?
No, they're not going to widen. They're just going to resurface.
Just resurface.
Yeah, our stretch is narrower. It's the way it was built in about 1920, just the way they did it.
Yeah.
You wouldn't build the road that narrow today, but 100 years ago, that's what they did, so we're sort of grandfathered in. You could think of it.
Yeah, it just seems very tight on our section of Northfield, especially if you're between semis next to you and coming at you.
We have 10-foot lanes. The other sections have 11.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Good progress.
Yes.
I have a question. Mr. Gilotti, with, in addition, well, are there any other, are there any other types of work being done besides resurfacing manholes, culverts, you know?
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, so they would repair or adjust the manholes or the catch basins to make sure that they're smooth or level with the new asphalt. But that's really about it. Nothing beyond the curves.
Just only on an as-needed kind of a basis?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Joe relating to resolution 2024-28? I'd ask council for suspension on that, too.
Yeah, while we're in the mood, we may as well do one last one on suspension.
We certainly would like to have it repaid, and at no cost, we can't beat that. Okay, we have item G, resolution 2024-29, local government services contract for bank reconciliation services. Nikki, you want me to talk to that? You want to talk to that a little bit?
This is just a resolution that we had talked about before with them coming in to help with the bank rec for the prior year and up to, I believe it's March of this year. So they wanted us to put legislation on so that they can come in. They had called me last month and said they had some openings. So I wanted to get the legislation on and passed so they can get in here as soon as possible.
Just to kind of add to that, I know we've talked about that. We wanted to get them in sooner, as Nikki stated, and they couldn't. So we did have other people looking at it. We had Matt Stowinski look at it, and Nikki went through UAN. You guys approved that. We talked about that. And now we're having, the, it's through the auditor, actually. It's a division of the auditor. It's local government services. So they work with the auditor, and they're, they're part of, they oversee that, I think. Or they're a separate leg for that. So now they did call Nikki and said if we were still interested, they would help with that. So I think it's, I'd like to ask for a suspension for that. I think it's something, some of the council, most of council's been, closed that loop, and we're really, Nikki, we were really happy that they were, well, we'll see. We're hoping they can. But they're going to be able to close the loop. We're gonna, if they can't find anything, they're going to have to make a determination along with the auditor. So, any questions on that? Nikki, do you have any more you want to add or Melissa to that?
Just looking forward to them coming in and helping us get straight.
Right. Any other questions on that? I'd like to ask for suspension on that because we don't want to miss our window. Correct, Nikki? They did want you to get back to them, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any question, anybody else have any questions related to that before we move on? Okay. So we are on item H. That's resolution 2024-30. That's the Village Hall Roof Replacement Contract. I also sent you information on that. Mr. Kalman worked on that. I'm going to let him talk to that a little bit. You should have, he's, the bid package and everything he gave you. Rob, do you want to? Something else that council's been looking forward to getting, looking forward to getting done? And go ahead, Rob, if you want to talk to that and...
Yeah, so, as I informed the mayor, we put this out to bid, the village roof. We received, I was surprised, we received 10 bids. I set forth my recommendation. It is the lowest bid. What was interesting with that company is they spent the most time on our roof, and they took core samples of the roof. So they really educated themselves before they set forth their proposal, which I liked. And this is what we've all been waiting for. This is, project's fully funded. So it's no cost to the village.
Nikki, you want to talk about that? That was our upper money, correct?
Correct.
And we, and you put the package together, and that's what the...
I, I had some help from Joe on putting the package together. I went down to the county and pitched it to the county council, and we received $250,000.
Right.
County council, they awarded. Yep, great job.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Is this a total tear off then? A complete tear off?
Above this room is a total tear off of all the ISO board.
Okay.
The other areas of the roof, the ISO board's not holding any moisture. So we'll tear off the EPDM on a new, fully adhered EPDM surface.
Now, the roof right next door, isn't it the same age? Is that not a problem over there?
So, again, the insulation, the insulation under the membrane is in good condition on that roof and the roof across the way. This is the insulation. The way this roof was done, I think it's somewhere between '96 and '98. Whoever did the roof, they did a full tear off. This was a ballast roof system where there's gravel on top of it. Whoever did it tore off the two lower roofs of the community room and over administration and police. And they installed it properly. This roof, they scraped the gravel off of it, put the EPDM over it. So there's, there's actually three roofs on top of this high roof here. And what's actually leaking is the old roofs. Yes, some moisture got through. It destroyed the insulation, and it's, it was... This is going to be fixed. The insulation is not broken down over there. We, I, of course, I put out, because you do a core sample on a handful of areas, you hope for it to be representative of the entire area. The samples that we've done, they look good. I put in their unit costs, each contractor, their unit costs. If we have to replace insulation when we get into it, we will. But we're, we're not expecting to on the lower roof.
So I'd ask for suspension from council on that. Rob, didn't he mention that might be able to get done this year? Was that talk of that, too?
They're ready to move on that pretty quickly. I'm calling them tomorrow. He wanted to hear how this went and asked me to update him.
Great. Okay. You might as well stay there, Rob. Okay. Any questions on resolution 2024-30? Okay, we have item five, which is other business. I'm going to, I have a couple of things, and then if council has anything, we'll go from there. I asked Rob to stay up, up here. That was one of the things I don't, Rob and Nikki had, has had many conversations on it. I know Nikki and myself talked to Mr. Montello about it. Rob, you kind of want to, you and Nikki, we can all kind of talk about the pickup truck. Kind of where, how that conversation started. The dealership said they ordered one.
So when, at the beginning, when we were in budget talks at the beginning of the year, I had set forth in the needs of the service department, my request was two pickup trucks. I got a call a couple of months, a month and a half ago from the dealership who quoted it. And he's like, you're not going to believe this. The truck you, you had us quote, we accidentally ordered it. They didn't order two. They ordered one. He said, let me know if anything changed. It's going to be on the lot in August. So in third week of August, it came in, and I started discussions with Nikki. And it just, I ran, ironically, that's when I first got Nikki's July end. I compared it to where I thought I was, and we're darn close. So I stopped by and I said, hey, this is where we're at. If I forecast the end of the year, we have enough money for the expense of this truck out of operations. Nikki said that she would check in the best way to do that. There's a bunch of intricacies between general fund and SCMR. So unfortunately, that's everything I know. I didn't get a chance to catch up with Nikki. Our schedules were totally off. So that's where I'm at.
So that was another thing. So, go ahead, Nick. I'll let you explain it. We're still haven't heard from them an answer yet, correct? Or do we know, can we move those, that money from that fund?
Kind of explain what fund it was. I know Rob touched on it a little.
Well, the street fund is actually a special revenue fund. And it is actually supplemented by our gasoline tax and auto. And then we supplement, I'm sorry, we supplement that as well because there are a number of items that are in there. And quite, because we never had any of those items. We always had things in the general fund. So things like wages and the village hall repair and maintenance are in there. That fund is specifically for street fund items, but I'm not saying it's wrong or right. But from what I read, you're not allowed to transfer any, once funds are in there, you can't transfer them out because it's a special revenue fund. So it's set up specifically for special items. My question to John and possibly the auditors is, can we, is a truck an allowable expenditure from that fund? Or can we transfer that money to the capital projects fund? So I have not gotten an answer on that, and that's kind of what we were waiting for. Because with the general fund, you can transfer money. It's a less restrictive fund. You can transfer it to any other fund. However, that one, I was questioning.
So I wanted to bring it up. I mentioned to every, you know, to John, Nikki, and Rob that we were going to discuss it tonight. So, and now that we're not, you know, we haven't done the appropriations, because the bottom line of it, we can get the truck, we'd like to get it, okay? But I understand where council's at, and I get that, and I'm in the same place. You know, we got, we're going over, well, we got to see. We'll talk more about the appropriations. But I just, because if we, if we can move the money, I just, I don't know if we're going to need like a motion or if we even need anything. So we just kind of wanted to make you aware, too, like what we're looking at. I didn't want, all of a sudden, you see a truck there. If we are able to move the money, it's like we didn't even talk about it. So I wanted to talk about it a little bit, get it out there. And we're going to see what we can do. Simple, simple as, as that. If we can't purchase it, we can't purchase it. But if we can transfer, you know, or move money somewhere else, that's, that's some of the things we're looking at.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Rob, is this one of the trucks that was on payments for a lease, and then we don't know? Those were the larger ones?
This is, I mean, no, this is just a pickup truck.
Okay, so that was the larger ones that you guys?
Yeah, that the lease payments were on the large, $166,000 trucks.
Right.
This is a $40,000 purchase.
That's because I thought that the lease payment was around $40,000, so it wasn't...
Yeah, per year for five years.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So we're going to, we'll see what kind of, what we can come up with. John, did you want to say something?
I'll just, I'll hop on it. I mean, I didn't, you know, I was on vacation. I just came back. I just found out about it recently. So I got to research it. Well, you should have an answer by the next COW, I would assume, right?
I would hope so, yeah.
Yes, by next week, I'll have an answer for you. And I may call you for a little more information on it.
Absolutely.
And past history with that fund, if we have ever bought a truck through that before.
We've purchased equipment from that fund, but...
To maintain the street.
That's, that's the past history, but Nikki, Nikki wants to move forward properly, so. That's, that's the past history, but Nikki, Nikki wants to move forward properly, so, and, um, I'm all for that.
Yeah, we are, we are, so, don't ever feel like you're on the, on the spot, Nikki.
Thank you very much.
You're keeping us, keeping us on the tracks.
It may be an allow, allowable expenditure, but I'd, I'd like to make sure that it is before we go ahead and do that.
Right, sure. And that's why I kind of want, wanted us to get, just get on the same page and, you know, if you see, if we don't need anything, we're able to make that, you guys under, you know what's going on too. Which we would, you know, John, we'd put our.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just, uh, for Rob, just to clarify, if I heard you correctly, you said that it looks like you would be able to purchase that truck without any added funds to your SCMR budget.
That's correct. When, when I forecast the SCMR, it appears that there'll be forty, at, at least forty thousand dollars in there to make the purchase of the truck.
And that forty thousand dollars was at the beginning of the year.
Well, and, and.
Right.
We came in a little bit lower on salt, which is a chunk of it.
Right.
So, but yes, the, that, those funds were allocated and approved at the beginning of the year by council.
Right, okay, are they, is that dealer, since they mistakenly ordered that truck and they have a truck on the lot, are they willing to deal a little bit on that price?
He said he would hold the price that he quoted me at the beginning of the year. He ironically, I, I said, you know, council's coming back, I never told him the date, ironically, he called me this morning, he's like, hey, I got somebody looking at this truck.
Well, they always do.
What, well, and, and I, I said, so it's, it, it's, it's, it's a forty thousand dollar expenditure with funds that we've already allocated and approved, or this one goes and we pay forty-seven. So it's, I mean, i- it's.
Okay.
It, it is what it is.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm just texting John Delano, tell him he should probably come on up. Because it looks like we're getting done here a little bit, just so you guys don't think I'm just texting.
I can do that for you, ma'am.
Well, I did too, if you. Thank you, Rob, with that, so we'll follow, we got a follow up on that. I do have receive a text from, um, he did answer me, John. Sean McCormick, and I just talked to Jeff a little bit. She just wanted to ask if I could mention it in the meeting tonight, and we can mention it next week and the following week. And it was, uh, I think it was in the, in the owl. That the Lake Club, Sean McCormick's the president of the Lake Club, that the Lake Club, Jeff, uh, is a trustee. The Lake Club is having a question and answer session on September fourteenth, is that a Saturday? At eleven AM at the Lake Club Pavilion for anyone that may be interested in being a trustee during the twenty twenty-five season. This is, uh, in reference, um, to the article that was in the owl this month, as to what help, type of help is needed. Uh, she also mentioned she will be adding that to the Facebook tomorrow. And she just wanted to thank council and all of us for mentioning it and, um, continuing to see if we can help them, can't stress enough, uh, how important it is to, how important the Lake Club is to the village. And anybody that can help in any way is greatly appreciated. Jeff, did you want to add something to that or? You want to just come up to the mic, come out up to the mic, because.
Jeff Alexander, seventy-three, twelve Walton. Uh, it's just not for, to become a trustee, if you have any questions about the lake operations also, because there's a lot people don't know about that goes on there as members. It's open to everybody, not just if you're interested in becoming a trustee.
Okay, okay. So it's a question and answer, uh, type of meeting, just.
Right.
Anybody, yep, great. So if somebody's maybe thinking about becoming a member or anybody has any questions how to like operates.
Right.
Or anything related to that. Good. Did you want to add anything else, Jeff?
Not about that, but I had a question about going back to the police contract of.
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, or, uh, I was wondering, is the chief representative by the union?
No.
No, okay, he has a contract, correct, on his own? The chief?
He's, he's in two sixty, he's in our legislation.
Okay.
His, his salary.
All right, and are the auxiliary police covered under the union representation?
No.
No, okay. I saw Dave Grams at the, Officer Grams at the luncheon last week in street clothes, armed, and I asked the chief if he was promoted to detective, he said he was.
Yes, that is correct.
Now, is that a permanent? And is there a rank, is he a sergeant or he's just, he's a detective or?
He's the detective.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I know we talked about it here a little bit, that was a, uh, a position that the chief, uh, can, uh, make. And not make, but he can, uh.
Appoint.
Appoint.
What about?
According to two sixty.
Officer Coase, is he, where's, where's he at now?
He's a sergeant.
On the street or?
He, they all go on the street. Even, even, uh, Dave Grams will patrol.
Right.
If needed, yeah.
Okay, so that's a permanent position then for Officer Grams? Okay, just curious.
Yeah, no, that's, it's all good, we're, we're gonna put some pictures and names together, I know some council members and residents have suggested that in the journal and stuff and I, I think we're gonna.
Okay, thank you.
I know the chief took a picture of his group and, and I probably try to get a picture of the service and then administration everybody and put some, names with some faces, thanks, Joe. The only other thing I did mention today and a little bit, I wanted to mention to you, Jennifer and the, the rest of the Safety and Insurance Committee. The chief, uh, asked me, um, he's got a, a lot of things that he would like to talk about with the committee and council, so I don't know if you were planning on having a meeting soon. Some of them were relating to dispatch, uh, you know, we get courted a lot of times of other communities joining our dispatch, uh, so I think some of that is some of the things he wants to talk about, for, for maybe some revenue, um, so there's just some things, little couple bigger things.
Sure.
So I just wanted to mention that to you.
I, I will check with chief and.
Yeah.
Check with everyone to see.
Yeah, no, no problem, I, I was gonna call and I thought, well, we'll just wait to the meeting and, I just want to thank council too, uh, and the Safety and Insurance Committee. People might think we had a recess, but we really didn't, there was a lot of, besides the, all the meetings we had, there was, even the council members that weren't part of the Safety Insurance Committee, there was a lot of phone calls taking place among the group and, and among council and, uh, whether you're on the phone or you're here, um, takes a lot of time, so, wasn't much of a recess, but those summers happen like that sometimes, but I want to thank everybody for that. That is all I have, does anybody else have anything for other business?
Mr. Mayor, I have two things, if I could briefly.
Yeah, go ahead, Diane.
I'll keep them as quick as I possibly can. First, I would like to thank, and Rob, I'm glad Rob's here, thank the service department for their hard work with all this chipping. This bad storm, which we'll have more of them, but I, this one was really phenomenal. But our service department did a wonderful job cleaning up the village and, and it was definitely noticeable that it was cleaned up so well. Also to the police department, I don't want to not thank them also, go out and check on a resident's home because she was still out of state. And I got her yard was fine, her house was fine, but I did run into a couple of police officers patrolling the streets also because of all the damage that was done. Also, thank you to the mayor because with our community center being without power all those days, we did, he did open up our little community room so that residents could come here. And I'd like to see that in the future, just to let them know, you know, if we can plan for that, for the next storm when there's such major power outages, to have our little room open for somebody to come in, charge up their phones or whatever else they might need to do. I mean, that, I think is a definite thing that our residents need. My other thing was totally something different, I just want to keep everyone informed. Back on August twenty-seventh, our state rep Phil Robinson and a few of the other state reps, I don't know if anybody saw this, they had a news conference. And this was about our county property tax, which everyone knows it's gone up in Cuyahoga County for various reasons. They are still working on House Bill two sixty-three, that's the seventy under seventy plan. They are really supposedly in Columbus, really getting close to it, to try and get this for our residents. The other one that I was really happy to hear about is House Bill one eighty-seven. This one is an adjustment on the Homestead Act. And this will help the seniors, right now, as inflation has gone up over the years, I mean, it's been quite a few years before they've ever changed that, they haven't had a thirty thousand dollar household income. Well, not too many people are below thirty thousand in order to get the Homestead Act. So it really hasn't kept up with inflation and the community needs. So these are two things that are definitely, um, on the agenda for Columbus and it was good to see that Phil Robinson gave a good talk about it with the other state reps and that they are working on these house bills, the other house bill was six forty-five, that was the one, um. Also, it's called a circuit breaker bill, uh, the taxes, I don't know exactly the details, but it is, if your taxes are more than five percent of your household income, you will be able to get a rebate back from the county. So there are three house bills now, so that is two sixty-three, one eighty-seven and six forty-five that Phil Robinson is working on for all of us. And that's it.
Thank you, Diane, for that, that's, appreciate you, uh, sharing that. And I, I want to thank you for kind of getting back, I, um, I know at the luncheon, uh, with the employees and, uh, the seniors and I also did put a little blurb in the journal, um, to thank all the departments. I know you mentioned the police and, and, and service, but all the departments through this, uh, tornado really just came together from the office staff, uh, building department, uh, community, community, uh, recreation, community life, they called everybody that's on their, uh, driver list and any seniors that they felt, uh, might be in need, they called, everybody just really pulled together. Just as always, very impressive, it just, uh, you really, sometimes you just, and Diane, I'm glad you brought it up because I, I probably would have overlooked it, I, I said it a couple of times and tonight would have been, is the right appropriate, our first meeting back. They really did a great job, it really, uh, and, uh, the power companies did a great job, we were really fortunate. We were one of those communities, we weren't the last, um, and there was some communities that were really, had a lot of infrastructure, it was really bad. So, and council, I know, was working with everybody, so I, I, I just, as mayor, I just can't be prouder or happier, um, to work with everybody. So that's, it really, uh, really, it kind of like you said, it takes a village, well, it really showed that, the dedication of, of the employees and, uh, their compassion for our residents was outstanding. So, anybody else have anything under other business, or we ask for adjournment? Any questions from our audience?
No.
Okay, anybody watching the live stream, any questions? Okay, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Second by Mr. Whedon, vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Okay. COW meeting adjourned at eight oh seven PM. Okay. Anybody's, you're welcome to stick around or you're welcome to go home and watch.
I don't think Joe's gonna do either.
Thank you, Joe, thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, we got a call to order.
Yeah, we're. Oh, you're gonna see if you can make it louder?
Say something under there.
Hello?
Jeff, you take it on?
You're getting reverb.
Good night.
Take care, thank you.
Hello, hello, hello?
That better?
Yeah.
Maybe that'll help a little bit with that. You turn it up just a tiny bit to get the reverb.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to.
I was just wondering, I was just wondering if somebody during our break here was dusting or something.
When I thought I knew how to play guitar, it was reverb, you know? Never learned how to play guitar though.
Okay. Like to call the special council, council meeting of the Village of Walton Hills to order for Tuesday, September third, twenty twenty-four at eight oh nine PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Here.
Councilman Whedon?
Present.
Okay, all of council here, along with our fiscal officer Nicole Sell, our law director John Montello, our fiscal clerk Melissa Swaywork, how, how do I, I said it right the first time?
Sangrick.
Sangrick. Apologize, Melissa. As you attend these meetings, I'll get it right here, I'll write it down next time. We also do have our economic development consultant here, Tom Jordan, and our legal representative, uh, consultant for the collective bargaining agreement, John Delano. Before I ask for this motion to go into executive session, I just want to explain to any residents that could be watching the live stream or any non-residents, uh, in this special council meeting, we are going to go into executive session to exec, uh, discuss the matters that are in this motion. We will reconvene and then vote on the agenda items, the legislation that is here that we just discussed in the COW meeting prior to this meeting. I just want to let everybody know that a lot of times we go into executive session after the legislation. The reason we're doing it first is because some of the legislation, uh, for example, example, the collective bargaining agreement that is in front of us tonight is part of the executive session. So I just wanted to let residents know, um, so they, we will reconvene and then there will be the live stream. Okay, we just don't know what time we'll reconvene. We just, however long it takes for our discussion in executive session. So at this time, could I ask for a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Spitznagle.
I'd like to ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending or imminent court action to discuss economic development regarding the Ford Innovation Center East, uh, personal, uh.
Permanent.
Permanent, yeah, thank you, permanent parcel number seven nine four dash three eight dash zero zero four to discuss collective bargaining with the police department, to discuss personnel matters regarding dispatchers and to dis- discuss compensation for non-union employees pursuant, pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one-two-one-point-two-two-G.
Second.
Second by Councilman Nielsen, vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Okay, we will go into executive session at, at eight twelve PM. So six PM, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Fred Nielsen, vote on the motion.
Yes.
Okay, I'll start, I'll start with Jennifer Allen.
Yes.
Diane Canzoni.
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
As we reconvene at ten oh six PM, we are back in our special council meeting. As stated earlier, when we were coming out of executive session. As stated earlier, when we were coming out of executive session, we stated that we would have this legislation in front of us, and we would vote on it. Um, and that's what we are gonna do right now. We have item A, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight. Who would like to, Jennifer, you mentioned earlier, would you like to introduce that for suspension?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce her suspension, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eight, an ordinance authorizing a collective bargaining agreement with the Village of Walton Hills and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge sixty-seven, Walton Hills Division, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Second by, who got that?
I did.
Friday.
What's that?
I did.
Okay. That's okay, I know you both said it.
Too much.
Second by Fred.
Somebody else said.
Vote on the suspension. Oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight.
Is there a second?
Second. Well, Diane can do it, she's, she was.
Second by Diane.
Heard nothing.
Vote on the adoption, Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight, eight passed, five oh, thank you, everybody. Item B, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine, who would like to introduce that for a first reading?
I will.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce for suspension.
No, first reading.
For first reading, resolution twenty twenty-four dash nine, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash three, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the Village of Walton Hills, Ohio during the year two thousand twenty-four, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Second, second by Raymond Whedon, okay. That was first reading, we never vote on the first readings.
Right.
Okay, so that's in there for first reading, thank you, everybody. You don't have to, okay, that's what we have. Item C, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five, authorizing, who would like to introduce that?
I will.
Mr. Whedon?
Mayor Colgraf, members of council, I would like to introduce for suspension, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply to the Ohio Public Works Commission for a potential grant and or loan for the funding of capital infrastructure improvement projects in the Village of Walton Hills, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Second by Fred Nielsen, vote on the suspension. Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, suspension passed.
Mayor Colgraf, members of council, I'd like to ask for the adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, vote on the adoption. Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, that passed. We have item D, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, who would like to introduce that for suspension?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce for suspension, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the fiscal officer of the Village of Walton Hills to enter into a contract with Trinmore Construction for the Andrews Drive Drainage Improvements, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Second by Fred Nielsen, vote on the suspension. Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Suspension passed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six.
Is it second by Fred Nielsen, vote on the adoption. Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that passed, five oh. Next year, no one's taking, none, none of us are taking off, okay? We have item E here, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, who would like to introduce that for suspension?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Nielsen?
I'd like to introduce for suspension, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the fiscal officer of the Village of Walton Hills to enter into a contract with Specialized Construction Incorporated for the two thousand twenty-four asphalt maintenance program, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Second by Raymond Whedon, vote on the suspension. Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for adopt, adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, vote on the adoption, Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, passed, five oh. Item F, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight, who would like to introduce that for suspension?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Jennifer Allen?
I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight, the ODOT preliminary legislation for suspension.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spitznagle, vote on the, uh, suspension. Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilman Canzoni?
Yes.
And council, councilwoman, I'm sorry, councilwoman Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
I, I was going by your names before, now I switched up, I don't.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, right, Mr. Whedon, okay, vote on the adoption, Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
And Mr. Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, so, adoption passed. We have item G, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, who would like to introduce that for suspension?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce for suspension, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the fiscal officer of the Village of Walton Hills to enter into a contract with local government services to reconcile the village's cash journal with the bank for the period January two thousand twenty-two through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Who was it by, second by Jennifer Allen, vote on the suspension. Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen? Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, suspension passed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for an adoption for resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine.
Second.
Okay, there's a second by Jennifer Allen, vote on the adoption. Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, that passed, five oh. We have item H, resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty, who would like to introduce that for suspension?
Go ahead, Ray.
Go ahead.
No, it's from.
Mayor Colgraf, members of council, I'd like to, uh, offer a, a resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty for suspension, or introduce twenty twenty-four dash thirty for suspension, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the fiscal officer of the Village of Walton Hills to enter into a contract with experienced roofing for the village hall roof replacement, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Second by Fred Nielsen, vote on the suspension, Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Uh, Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Okay. Suspension passed.
Mayor Colgraf, members of council, I'd like to ask for the adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty.
Second.
Second by Fred Nielsen, vote on the adoption, Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, that also passed, five oh, for suspension.
Mr. Mayor, we have one other motion.
Well, you know, I was thinking about that, and there's a special council meeting, should we just do that to committee the whole next week? I mean, technically, that's.
Oh, you're not.
Deal with any issues that are on the agenda for a special council meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do it technically.
That's true.
Maybe we can just do a quick special council before the COW.
Well, I don't even know if we need a special council, you could probably do it in the COW.
This, just a, is it a resolution?
No, it's under, under other, other business.
But it is, would be a resolution, wouldn't it, or what, what would it be, just a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, John, you, you're the last listener, you do.
I just, yeah, I thought it was, I saw a special council, if it was a regular council, we'd have, uh, we'd have.
A little relief.
You'd have other business on there, you know?
Yeah.
I got you. Yeah, we don't even have other business on the agenda, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody would care, I know, none of us would.
Well, but we care, no, we do care, we want to do it right.
We have at least one person who it's going to matter to.
Yeah, though we care.
If they know it's coming, it's okay.
That's why you're sitting here. That's exactly why you're sitting here. Thanks, Jeff, for reminding, so we'll do that, we can do that, um, in the next COW meeting?
I can, I'll type it up in the next, be on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.